Okay.
But then I had to plug that.
Three minutes.
Four.
I've got a second computer tap to in a row.
It might be.
It might be. I'm right above the table.
It's not blocking, it's nice.
It's totally. You just want to get your spots in for the day I do this. It gets quiet. I prepare stuffs talking all at once.
If we all have to take a break?
I mean, mine would be to keep working on the sound of the mission.
Yeah.
I don't like them to go down.
All right, it's cool enough. Look at her.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead, Paul.
Got all our cohorts and handlers in the big hole. More cohorts to do down in Lima for the previous department. Couple guys now, Melrose. Well, I'll probably have to start getting ready for stuff I was using. Uh, having the new guys started today. Fill it out paperwork and stuff. For that, well.
Nick?
Nick? Uh, not much as new since last week. Uh, we're trying to get the road to go before winter this week, so. We're at Anken, so we kind of slow down. You ready for the meeting up there?
Are you sure?
Uh, we had a new hire start today for the corner spot we had a while ago. Um, yeah, busy end of the week, last week through the weekend. Uh, I don't know the numbers in the jail. Ian's here today, so. Calls around about same to the dispatch center. Big bit.
Sure.
Uh, last week was weird because the university didn't give us one to stay off. Uh, they swapped out for the day after Thanksgiving. So, uh, I was here. Uh, redid the grazing plan for the, uh, ball. Uh, we're up to sixty-six 4H, uh, enrollments. I think we're going to hit over two hundred this year, which is, it's great. It's great to see the program growing. Uh, I'm taking off this afternoon to go to Bozeman for the, uh, extension annual conference of Montana's, the extension service annual conference, and then I'll leave Friday to go to Atlanta for the National Association of 4H Agents Conference on the roof for the next couple of weeks, but it's going to be good.
Good.
Uh, I'm going to work on some building stuff this week. Uh, try to patch up some holes in a roof that's leaking. Pick up some of my equipment from repair cops and, yeah. But I got this one.
Thanks.
Um, payroll is today. Hopefully everybody's got their time sheets in. I will be gone Wednesday and Thursday for finance training. Hopefully I'll figure out what I'm doing. We should be honest. Betty will be in and out, so if we screw up your paychecks too bad today, she'll fix it for you.
Oh, good news.
And that's about it?
This might be a good time to say too, the paycheck's going out. Uh, there's going to be a letter in there about this. I, I don't want to call it a two-week pay period. We've had a lot of requests, uh, you know, we've got the thing set up for advancements. So, uh, we're going to try to do an automatic advancement for people that want to, to sign up. Uh, this, this, this because of the holidays coming up. And December in particular is one of those five-week pay periods and you'll get your paycheck the day before Christmas, which probably is going to be a lot of good for a lot of people. So, uh, the letter and the thing's going to say is, is if you want this automatic thousand-dollar advance every two weeks.
Not every two weeks, two weeks after.
Two weeks after the pay period. You get your check, two weeks later, you'll get a thousand-dollar check. It'll be automatic if you sign up. And then if you want to cancel, you have to let Becky know. Uh, we're going to toy with this, that you can probably get it started as, as early as November and December. And, uh, uh, and I don't know. What we're trying to do is ease the problem on Becky so she don't make all these mistakes. No. No, uh, but we don't want people in and out all the time just to make this simple. But there may be a need, like this Christmas one coming up, is somebody needs a thousand dollars advance to get Christmas going and doesn't want to do it year-round. Maybe we'll talk about that. Anyway, talk to your people. That's what this letter is all about. Uh, because a lot of people want to do the two-week pay period and we're not going to go to there. It's going to stay on the same identical schedules we're on. The only thing is that you're going to get about half of your check or a thousand dollars two weeks after your paycheck comes in.
And as, and as a reminder with this advance, there's no, nothing taken out of it. So everything will be taken out of your normal paycheck.
So it's exactly like you're doing. If anybody knew that advances now, you get an advance, you go in and everything gets all, uh, settled at the pay period on the third, after the third Saturday. If you want to do it, talk to Becky. Betty, you're, Betty down there and, uh, get signed up for it. If you want to do it. And, uh, if you want to do it just for the Christmas time, we'll talk about it. Uh, you know, one of the five-week pay period. That's the policy we had. We could do five-week pay periods in advances and we might sort of leave that in place, I guess, if you want. So toying with it. If they concern their complaints or anything, let us know. Okay, thanks, Becky.
John?
Um, well, we had a busy week kind of going on this week. We have, uh, Ballers on till third of November. Getting married this Saturday. So, um, this week we have West Electric is going to be here, um, working on the generator. We're going to try to get as much as, they're going to start wiring it and hopefully get the generator. They're planning to get it put in and set up within the next week or two. Um, I'm getting the propane, hopefully this week filled up in the propane tank. So we got that going on this week. Um, we had some flooding in the jail last week from a shower that bursted. That was fun. The plumb drain. So, um, we didn't have any more extra acorn parts, but the showers did come in. So we're going to start replacing the old shower units with the new shower units Thursday. Um, so we'll be down there with that in the morning. And then on Tuesday, we also have, one of the toilets is going to get fixed in the jail cell. The seal on the O-ring seal is leaking, so it's constantly leaking every time they flush it. Um, other than that, it's, uh, Kevin's working in the remodel. It's looking really good. He's working on the trim and things like that, so coming along. Uh, and it's just myself and Alexis pretty much the next couple of weeks. So I'll be jumping in and out throughout the day.
Nick? Mike?
Um, pretty quiet week. Going to go to a meeting out of Polaris tomorrow, and I have observation for, for teachers. They were gone on Thursday and Friday from the MEA, um, conference over in Missoula. I hope they learned a lot. I don't, I don't know if they all went. MEA allows them to stay home and they can watch it on video or they can continue to work at the school. They don't have to attend these things, so. I think, I think a lot of them would like to get them out of town. But it would be a very quiet week, man.
Okay. Be careful. Thank you.
Um, Friday, the ballots for the city of Dillon and the town of Lima. Municipal elections went out in the mail, so they should start rolling in today or tomorrow. Um, I did put a PSA out on the radio station, the newspaper, Golemax. Ed Trace put it on the website regarding the, um, household that was passed in the 2025 legislature that now requires not only a signature, but also the year of birth on the affirmation envelope. So it's just another thing to help us with, um, the identification of the ballot, but also like, we have a lot of junior seniors, that type of stuff. Um, and it will help with that too. But if the year of birth is not there and the signature is not there, the ballot can be rejected. So, you know, people who go absentee or by mail make sure that they know that. So it's kind of work, but.
Tom?
I'm out of here again. I'm headed to Helena for, uh, DESF. I just got back from Willowstown and I don't know why it is that they put all these trainings in one month, so. But I'm still standing, going to answer emails, phone calls and everything. Well, I'm out and taking care of permits, I guess, all will sort well, so. I'll leave it at that. Better get to the road.
Hey?
Any questions for me?
Anybody? No? Okay, all right. You there?
Tom, what are you?
Tom?
What, what? When are you leaving right now? I need to come.
Okay, you just drop that off over there if you want. Okay.
Um, do I have any questions for the generator from the video?
Of course. Yep, always available by phone.
Okay, that's good.
Got it?
Thanks, Tom.
Go ahead.
Um, jail is currently at seventeen people. Uh, last week we had a very busy district court week. I think there was four sentencings. Um, but we're having issues right now. MSP is still working on their water issues with National Guard and everything else, so they are not, uh, they're not accepting anybody new until they can get that stuff finished. So, um, we'll be holding on to some of those MSP ones for a little bit longer. And I still have several downstairs waiting for DOC commits, but they are anywhere between six to eight weeks out, um, after sentencings. Um, yeah, but flooding was, uh, not fun, so hopefully we'll get all of that fixed, um, and going this week. Other than that, I think we've got three for district court tomorrow too, and I'll keep trying to pile them through, so. Out of the jail.
Trey?
Oh, just lots of little stuff, computer work, deed work, road work. Never seems to end, so that's mine.
Good study.
Um, we've been pretty swamped in my office. If you saw me last week, I didn't know if I was coming or going, so I'm hoping this week we can get caught up. Um, we have probably ninety to a hundred civil filings that are backlog right now. Those are like debt collections, evictions, um, et cetera. And those always get put to the wayside when we have criminal stuff going on. So the sheriff's office has had several felonies and search warrants that have been taking precedent, and that's why we've got a backlog right now of all the other stuff. So plan this week is just to get caught up and hope for the best. That's it.
Paul?
Um, not a whole lot this week going to happen. Uh, last week I went to a landy's training with Karen Alley. We're going to have to update our subdivision regulations and amendments. Um, she's going to be here in the next couple of weeks to give another update to this calendar. Um, yeah. Doing the same surveys and blood plane issues and, yep.
Hey? Anybody else? Any of you? Have a good week, guys.
Thank you. Thanks.
Real quick, when you change things up, it always ends up this way. So because I have to be the hell in here real quick. We moved the meeting to nine thirty instead of eleven. And because of that, I can see we're not going to have a call. Sheriff can't make it, Chief please.
Yes, nobody's.
Tom had to leave. So any concerns, questions or concerns you need to do it, or whether we're good to hold this next meeting at the next quarterly meeting time at the right time?
In January.
January. That ball in the budget, we can look through that. That'll be half your time. So appreciate you taking time out of your schedule. Budget, recent projects, there's nothing big on that that Nick was saying. Okay, meeting council because of the lack of a call. We will be back together January. Something at eleven o'clock.
On the, I guess this can be off the record, on the Odell repeater, what do you guys want for that call sign? If we're hard ground out there using it.
That is what my favorite.
Is that a question?
That guy.
What?
That's the adventure Nick, I would think Nick. So you're hitting analog.
Stick around.
Well, one minute we'll have.
Oh, close down. I'd like to have that. Talk to the sheriff.
Okay.
Stop down there.
Okay, sounds good.
Let me get annoyed at you.
Okay.
Hey you, what's that? Hey you, that's the call sign.
Works for us. We're very intolerable.
Hey you.
Did you guys get hold of the Forest Service repeater up by Y River?
We keep hammering them.
Okay.
They're moving at the speed of nothing.
Speed of the Forest Service.
Gotcha.
This summer they were dragging their feet because of the new directives they've got from their bosses. So they don't, I mean, they're trying to. Opinion is they're dragging their feet, prove that they can't get that without more help. And that's what we had the other day in the WSAs, all this kind of stuff. So they're supposed to be cutting trees and that's all we wanted to do. And then this close down, I don't know what's going to happen on that, so.
Just curious.
But yeah, we need that after the end of that April, what if they, you know, keep following up on that. All right. Scotty said he was coming in on that.
Yeah, the next.
The lease. Yeah, the lease.
...
Okay, so Sky is not coming back till later in the week.
That's what he just said.
Margo was in court today and was not briefed on any of it. So I talked, I just got off the phone with Sky. He said that the lease is same terms, but it's for 40 years. And the only added difference is that y'all have to give notice of who is in charge. Notice to y'all if it changes hands of who is in charge of paying the lease. Right? He said y'all can either approve and just go ahead with it. Or if y'all really want me here present to go over everything, we can reschedule it for next Monday.
Now, do you need it, do you need a copy right away of it?
Yeah, by the, by the end of the month.
No, well, we can handle that. We can easily get that. We can approve. I don't, have you seen it yet?
No, I have not. He promised to forward the draft of it. But, you know, he basically surmised that the only change was really the, you know, from a 10 year to a 40 year.
10 year to a 40 year.
Right. And the, and the current, the first current 10 year lease is up for re-roll on 2027.
Okay, I'm aware of that, yeah. Yes, and if you have it, today's 20th, right?
Yes.
So when does this pickwork for?
Oh, my memory from the auction here, NRA and the, yeah, we're, we're gonna, the purpose really for requesting the extended period of the, of the lease was to basically have it look more favorable to, you know, grant such as FWP. Or the one we're gonna submit for here at the beginning of November is Friends of the NRA. Yeah, so it's a, an earlier due date, but with less requirements to submit initially for the plan. So whereas like with FWP's grant, we would, you know, probably have to get that started, you know, as soon as we have that, that final, final lease. Cause it may take us three months to complete the application process. It's, it's so extensive that you have to have like a five year development plan and all the engineering quotes and, and drawings and, and all the information. It's a full, but it's probably gonna cost us five grand, if not more, just to do the application. So, uh, but the, uh, but the Friends of the NRA grant is a little bit more like a questionnaire. So pretty readily, you know, easy to submit, which is what we're striving for. So that actual submission date is November 5th. Yeah. So if we get this done by, you know, the end of the month with the second, you know, court of public hearing and we get, you know, the terms and such all finalized and, you know, we'd be good to go with, you know, at that point. Cause we pretty much have the draft of our application done.
Cause my understanding with, uh, Sky, you're like today, we could have approved it one time period, but no, you know, a lot of this stuff is yet to the public hearing. But this is the change, that one thing, 10 to 40.
Yep. Yeah, that, that's it.
Yeah, so that, you know, there's no public hearing involved. But you know, you can, that, you know, say you strive to get the NRA one. Does that, can they laugh each other additionally in the future work with the FWP?
Yes. Yeah, we can. So we were outlining with this Friends of the NRA grant, um, which basically has an unlimited no matching fund requirement.
Oh, that's, that's good, buddy.
So we kind of like, with one fell swoop, would get everything we need, you know, to basically finish a, a major part of, you know, the work that we wanna do, you know, by, by the end of next summer.
Sure.
So, uh, that's the, that's, and when we found those were the available funds and the simple requirements for the application, we kind of, you know, kind of started speeding things up a little bit to, to request a revision for the, uh, the term and then get our side of it done to, to make the application. And then we're successful, um, cause the, like the, uh, uh, FWP application, when is that due?
That's a, that's a February 1st. Cause I was at a conference and they had a booth and I stopped and did, I sent you something.
Yes, you did. You gave me the contact that you spoke with, you know, passed that on to Jackson. Speaking on somebody at Friends of the NRA, if we get things going, we'll probably have to hire a grant writer to do the, uh, to do the FWP grant. In which case, we're able to pursue the person, the contact you provided. And hopefully, you know, the person we contract with will, uh, familiarize himself pretty quickly with, you know, who the contacts and what the full blow process is for, for the FWP grant.
Yeah, I never did talk to her long enough to know how much, many dollars they had to play with, you know? To go left, you know, NRA is, that's a big deal.
Yeah, NRA is, you're pretty flexible, but even FWP, um, I think they, when you spoke with them, they have about $400,000 available. They increased it for 2026.
So that, that 200,000, that's statewide or is that per grant? What's, what's that? 400,000, how much would be available to you?
That's statewide.
That'd be statewide. So they gets to run it across 10, at least 10 people that are applying.
Which they did last year. I think there were, there were 10 awards.
That's, I actually, I kind of got that much out of the 10 awards. So that's 40,000 bucks of, which is not sneeze at.
There's nothing to sneeze at, right? And, you know, um, you know, the, what we spoke about in our lunch meeting and what we planned to do. Um, we've rolled up, you know, some budgetary numbers for what we're looking at. So there's basically four, four parts that we're doing, that we're planning to do out, out of the range. First is gonna finish the earth and berm work that we spoke about. If you're familiar with the gun range, you know, there's a line of shooting benches across the, the left side of the parking lot. And then there's some blank space and then what was the pistol shooting area on the right. And a couple of years ago, one of our board members secured getting the excavation spoils off the solar farm. So we had them drop that, um, at the 100 yard line in front of the fence. That is, you know, that's placed out there to keep livestock out of the, you know, the public area, the shooting range.
Yeah.
So, uh, we put a 100 yard berm across that to protect that fence. Cause it's, over the years, it's been taking some heavy fire. And then secondly, uh, we also did some excavation work to, work to improve the pistol shooting area. It's off to the right. So that was pretty much just, you know, into the berm with some hazard targeted stand placement and, and general shooting. So what we're gonna create are at least three, if not four, shooting bays excavated off into the side of that hill to provide separate and designated, you know, pistol shooting areas. And then also extend the, uh, earthen berm to the, I'll say the, the, is that north or west? I think it's north. But anyway, um, so from the path that you can take to go out to the targets, on the right, there's three benches. And then we're gonna clear an area for sitting and pro shooting. And then we're gonna put a shipping container out there for various material and storage for shooters and clubs and so forth. And then we're gonna extend the berm diagonally off that to protect the pistol shooters from any of the rifle shooting. And then also give the rifle shooting an angle to that with the guys that like to shoot the targets that go up the hill on the right. So, um, the project we're at right, where we're at right now with the project, we need to spend about 60, 60 grand on completing that earthwork. And then also put berms behind each of the 100 yard target areas. And then also finish the pistol berms off to the right. So we have like three, maybe four, you know, elevated earthen berms for, you know, protection when multiple people wanna be shooting or doing pistol type shooting activity out there. Our second biggest part is then to, you know, repair the fencing, livestock fencing around the parking area and such. And also, you know, place, you know, we're getting specs and bids on target stands, which as you can imagine, get blown up pretty quickly and pretty easily. So these are pretty heavy duty, you know, steel and such, um, with the, with backdrops on them. So we can further, you know, protect and support, you know, rifle shooting. And then we're also gonna, like I said, I mentioned, we're gonna procure the shipping container for general storage and security out there. And then the last part is we're gonna update all of the signage. So not only signage at the entrance with rules and, and contacts and such, but then also safety rules and garbage markers and such in the pistol shooting bench area to, to support that. So also we've got about a $90,000 budget specked out for the most part. And has, you know, with the, the, the funds that would be available from that FWP grant, we can cover that, you know, next year and get all of that work done next year. So as we apply for additional grants, say with, um, FWP and such, we do have some additional ideas that we haven't, you know, dove into too deeply to continue to expand kind of the facility usage. So that, um, we can offer the training area and, you know, qualifying and regular shooting type programs for the PD Sheriff's Department, Fish and Wildlife for both the federal and state for their, you know, firearm, you know, qualification requirements and regular training. And then some people are like, uh, Josh Aiden, who owns 406 Armory, would like to have and draw like a rifle shooting competition. And, uh, some of the other members, Jack and Paul here, either conduct like NRA safety training and/or, um, would host, you know, a pistol shooting match. So this, you know, facility improvement would by default, you know, uh, basically, uh, you know, benefit the community, you know, to continue as, you know, an open shooting area. But then would also give us some enhanced safety facility setup. So we can host, you know, either organized training or organized competitions or other type activities for, for, you know, better usage of the facility out there.
Sure. I mean, that, uh, one piece of paper you had, but it's, like in better words, showed like an aerial 3D looking deal. Did I show you that or did I come back with a piece of, they just have a, is there a next to that?
Well, it's a, it's like a, uh, it's a 3D generated drone survey that R.E. Miller did for us. Uh, they did a, a, a general topographic survey.
All of this dirt work and it showed how it played out on there. It's pretty cool.
Plus it, plus it provides, provides them with concrete data to provide us with a quote. So the 3D imaging on it actually calculates the volume of material they're gonna have to move. So it makes it, you know, pretty spot on for them to give us a, you know, a pretty decent quote on the cost.
Yeah. Oh, they're good people. Very much so. They're very good people.
Can I, I could drop off copies of that for you if you'd wanna take a look at it?
Yeah.
Address any other questions you might have.
Now, please, if it's scheduled next week, which it has to be, will is this time of day or next week?
Sure. Yeah, we're wide open on, on Monday.
Monday, Monday, 10 o'clock. That'd be the best way to do it, I guess. That'd be the thorough way to do it.
Okay.
You know, we know. I mean, we, we get okayed at least today, but. Yeah, I mean, I haven't read it or anything. They all sign off that day. Yeah. We all sit and record it across the hall. And then you don't get a copy of the recorded one. It'll look very.
Yeah.
Thorough then.
Kind of what we're shooting for is around the 20th, so I can try to get the grant reviewed. But, you know, that's just a few extra days. So I think we're, we're still in good shape as far as getting it submitted. You know, I'm just, I'm just trying to have somebody that, that has reviewed these before, this specific grant, to take a look at it and kind of give us, uh, that looks good or no, change this.
Yeah, or add this, whatever. Yeah. Whatever's understandable.
Because basically it's the application submission for Friends of the NRA, it's like a one time deal, right? You can't follow up with the additional information. I mean, they'll have questions that come back to us.
One packet.
For us, it's a one time submission.
Once it goes in. But we're, we're fortunate. We just had one, one major agreement page to fill in there and the rest is on you. I mean, it's really, you know, community oriented thing and it's worth improving. It's up there in an ideal location or isolation or, no. Well, cross your fingers that we'll, we'll get, for sure, wrap something up next week.
We'll, we'll pick it up in front of Sky's house, house and make sure he gets that done for us.
That's why I told him, he'll catch you when he steps off his drag down. But he's probably, when families and kids hurt or families and all that stuff are down that it, but I've been there. That takes, when they holler, then. Anyway, yield it. We'll get her done. But I appreciate you guys coming in.
Certainly.
See you next week.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Thank you.
Hopefully I won't see you again this week, you know, since you don't have any meetings with. All right. Let's run the school board tonight.
Oh. I haven't, haven't done that part.
Okay. Don't blame you one bit. Don't blame you one.
How about the city finance meeting?
Oh. No, thank you. Friday's border health.